You can come back.
I don't have the GFL.
Uh, that would be Mr. Burgess.
Oh, Mr. Burgess.
He's out there. And Mr. Shaw had the, uh...
See there?
It's Marcus. Marcus. Hello there. Yep, she told me. Yep, her, she told me.
Yeah, that's, that's my girl. I used to watch her exercise every morning. She used to put it in.
Yep, she sure is.
Okay, Ms. Manica Yoshin. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the Highland Park in person and virtual regular meeting scheduled for Monday, June 3rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Madam Deputy Clerk? Uh, hold on, for opening ceremonies. From this day moving forward, if you do not have a photograph hanging in the lobby, you're not a duly elected member of City Council. You do not come and cross the dais and have a seat up here.
Yes, I understand.
Okay? Let me make sure I get that as opening ceremonies. If you do not have a photograph hanging in the lobby, if you are not an employee of the city, you do not cross that dais and come up here and sit at the podium. In the city of Detroit, you'll be arrested for doing that, and moving forward, you'll be asked to leave the building if you cross that line and attempt to sit down with members of City Council. There are five of us for these elected seats and no more. We will not have that type of embarrassing disgrace happen again in this chamber. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilman Ashafi. Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Manica. Council Pro Tim Robinson.
President.
Council President Thomas.
Here, thank you very much. Item three is the approval of the agenda. Members of City Council, take what time you need to deliberate, and then the Chair will entertain a motion on the approval of the agenda. So, Ms. Manica.
I'd like to approve the agenda with two walk-ons. The first one is resolution to amend the contract with GFL Environmental USA Incorporated for Waste Disposal Services. And the second one is a resolution to approve assessment contract with WCA assessing. These are only just to add them to the agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Manica, could we also omit item 7D, the resolution regarding 309 tuxedo? Um, I believe the administration is still waiting for some paperwork on that.
Yes. So, to add to that, uh, motion, I'd like to omit 7D.
Okay, we have a motion. Uh, the Chair will offer support to that. Uh, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica, supported by the Chair. That motion is to approve today's agenda with the addition of the resolution to approve the assessment contract for WCA assessing, the resolution to amend the contract with GFL Environmental USA for waste disposal, and the removal of item 7D from the agenda uh, to be dealt with at a later date. Questions concerned? Discussion on the approval?
I've got a question.
Go right ahead.
Is the assessor here today?
Mr. Shaw is in the audience.
Uh, is GFL here today?
GFL is the trash company.
Yeah.
No.
They're not.
But Mr. I think...
And this is just a matter, they have, we have a two-year extension on the contract. This is just the city's decision to agree to an extension with them.
Uh, who prepares the documents?
Some document was prepared by Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess, would you be able to speak to these? Thank you, sir. Okay, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call a roll on approval of the agenda?
Councilman Ashafi? I'm sorry?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, so we have, ladies and gentlemen, in the first 10 minutes of this meeting, a stalemate where this City Council has refused to approve the agenda, meaning that this meeting cannot go forward without the approval of the agenda.
We only, uh, uh, we only refuse to approve the agenda with the walk-on items. Ever had time to look at them?
Uh, as, as it stands, I have not heard a motion for any other type of approval?
I make a motion to approve the agenda without the walk-on items.
So now I have questions. So let me make sure we got this, this straightened. So you're saying we are going to move forward without adding these items that are the approval of our agreement with our local assessor and the approval of an extension of the contract with the trash collection company?
All I'm simply saying is, these items have been walked on at the last second. We haven't had an opportunity to read nor vet any of the information in what you've given us, and you guys got a bad habit of that. You can't walk something on 30 minutes before we get in here and expect us to be able to comprehend and give you a ballot vote in that short amount of time?
Friend, let's go forward. We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as is. Motion, ma'am, go ahead.
So, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Shaw. So, when we go, if we put it on, or if we don't, if we put it on the agenda, we have an option to disable it until if you prefer hearings from either Ms. Square or the Mayor about the walk-on or a different attorney about the walk-on. But I, I just don't want to not walk on a fellow because he did approve the GFL contract previously in another session. So I just wanted to make that mention. Or if you see one that you would like to walk on instead and not walk on the other one, but the assessor is still here, uh...
With all respects, Ms. Manica, I would be more comfortable that you had your appropriate amount of time to vet both of the items, and I was appreciative if it could come back to us at the next council, because I'd say no to it. I'm just saying that we need time to vet the information that's been given to us. You can't walk it on 30 minutes before and expect us to comprehend and give you a ballot vote.
Okay, so is there a deadline for us for either one walk-ons?
Yeah, ideally, we'd like to get this, uh, it expires, the first contract expired on June 30th. We're gonna be in the next month. This council is predictably unpredictable to where we don't get things approved on the appropriate time. We're talking about the ability to assess people's property and the collection of garbage. We have the authors of those, uh, walk-ons in the room, experts in their field. I don't understand. I mean, what good is education and credentials if you don't deploy it? They're here, and we have the documents in front of us.
Can we talk some more?
Let's do so. Well, there's, there's an additional item that CD wanted to have removed. That item is 7D. Is that to be taken into consideration or not?
7D. D.
D. D as in dog.
You said this item isn't ready?
Correct.
So there's a document submission?
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Ashafi to approve the agenda as is with the removal of item 7D that was seconded by Council Pro Tim Robinson. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilman Ashafi? Councilwoman Manica?
No.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, let's move forward with this agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda with the removal of 7D.
Ma'am, um, we, we...
No.
She, she took, she, she took the roll on it, and the three of us... I say yes. I want us to go ahead and move forward.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was some, I was saying some other things in my breath, yeah. So we're gonna move forward with the removal of item, item 7D. Uh, Director Clyburn, uh, this is something that you can bring back for us to revisit. Moving on to item four, the approval of the proposed minutes in person and virtual regular meeting for May 20th, 2024.
I approve the proposed minutes for in-person and virtual regular meeting, May 20th, 2024.
We have a motion on second. We have a motion on the floor for Councilwoman Manica to approve the regular in-person virtual meeting minutes for May 20th. The motion was made by Councilwoman Manica, seconded by the Chair. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. This is normally the portion of the meeting that we set aside for Mayor McDonald to speak. She is not with us tonight, so we will move into citizens' participation. After what I saw last week, we're gonna, we're gonna do two minutes and one second. If you can't get it done in two minutes and one second, write us a letter, please. That's how, from that, after what I saw last week, I was appalled. We're gonna do two minutes and one second.
Council President, I'm...
I'm sorry?
I'm here.
Okay, then, Madam, Madam Mayor, the floor is yours.
Promise to be brief. Um, good afternoon, citizens of Highland Park Council and all the rest of the audience, administrators. Um, I'm hoping that you guys are watching the Channel 4, uh, Michigan Chronicle broadcast.
Yeah, watching us.
I think it's very good that they come into the city for 24 hours to talk about what we need, what we can do to help ourselves and to move forward. So, it's an, it's up to 6 o'clock tomorrow morning. I know some of you are night birds. If you get a chance, go to clickondetroit.com and just be, you can review all of the, uh, conversations that had, was had. I was just on, uh, they taped my, my part a week and a half ago, so, um... Also, if you know of any high school seniors, high school graduating seniors, on June 12th at 5:00 PM, I will be holding a special coffee and conversations with the graduating seniors. We're gonna try to provide some resources for them. We're also gonna try to provide, um, some swag gifts for them, uh, and I'm gonna pass out my, um, scholarship applications. Uh, this year, we are including a new application, the Sam Wells Scholarship Fund. So, uh, if you know of any Highland Park graduating seniors, please let them know to contact, uh, me or, and my assistant, so we'll know who's coming. Um, there was one thing last week, a last meeting about the water that was being used by, uh, marijuana facilities. I did do the research, I did pull up all the bills. Everyone is paying the bill. There are three people who scheduled for the shut-off, they will be shut off, or they have already been shut off. Um, I'm still waiting on information from the state. Uh, uh, Councilman Ashafi mentioned that it was illegal for them to operate. I did contact the two people he mentioned. Neither one of them had any information and didn't know what was going on. So I am waiting specifically from the state marijuana licensing organization, and, um, once they send that, if that is correct, I will be, uh, making sure that we have an order to shut them down. That's all I have. Thank you. You guys have a good evening, and don't forget to watch and get some information on the, uh, ClickOn, uh, WDIV live screen. I appreciate you. Have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. So ladies and gentlemen, this is citizens' participation on agenda items only. We have a tabled item, administrative budget, uh, community development and engineering, the four items for tonight, and should be out of here before midnight. If you have two minutes worth of comments that you'd like to make on any of those agenda items, now is an opportunity to do so.
Good evening, Council. Um, so, uh, I, I would like to comment on the budget and urge you guys to not pass it this evening. I don't believe that it is ready, um, to pass. Um, I, I think that my husband, um, was taking a look at, uh, the pension funds, and he wasn't able to be here tonight, um, so he asked me to, uh, to, to tell you that it looks like there was, um, uh, $23.5 million, um, in the three pension funds, uh, it, on the 30th of June last year, and the beginning balance on July 1st was zero. So I think that we need to find out what happened to that $23.5 million. Um, also, I, there are many, uh, a, a, all, all of the pension funds have negative balances, and, um, I thought that the money was so that we could maintain balances in our pension funds. So, uh, the water and sewer fund, um, was $3.5 million over their original budget, and, well, $2.5 million over the amended budget, which, as I mentioned last week, was not included as the amended budgets, um, uh, in this, uh, version of the budget. Uh, and the Tifa fund, um, says we have $5.9 million in there, um, and the, the, um, audit report says that $3.6 million was loaned to a developer, so I think that we need an explanation for that. Um, there's an awful lot of overtime for the police department, nearly $400,000 worth of overtime that should be considered, um, and, um, that, that was one of the things that, um, had been talked about before was overtime. And, um, uh, and to, uh, the liability insurance...
Thank you, ma'am. That's for two minutes. Any additional citizen that would like to be heard?
Hey, don't start, let me get my glasses on. All right, and I have my own time as well, where I can... All right, so I first want to talk about the community development, um, A, B, and C. When we look at A, um, to sell, to, to sell to DMC Property Management, have we gone up there and looked at how he's taking care of the property he currently owns? 'Cause since last city council meeting, I have, and it's not been very well taken care of. The parking lot, we talked about the parking lot not being level, it's not clean in front or, or along the sides, and I went up there just to get a little Caesar's pizza, so I had to wait till I walked around and looked. Um, the resolution to, uh, to, to sell the Hamilton property to Bobby D. and Lewis on behalf of an entity to be formed at a later date, what, what, what are they gonna do with that property? We have two churches and a, a park across the street on Hamilton. Is that gonna fit in with the development of it? And then they're buying a building that's already adjacent to a building that has fallen down just this way. Um, and then the third resolution of the selling the two lichen lots at 1026 and 130 Kendall to Holy Ghost Temple, uh, for $2,000, that church is on Hamilton, so what would they be using that property for? So that's what I have for the properties, and then let's go ahead and talk about the budget. The budget, if we do it, if we do it, Ms. Lisa asked us to do it, how you doing? Um, what are we gonna do in June, July? How, how, how are we gonna pay our bills? How, how is the police department gonna work? What's gonna happen with GLEWA? What's gonna happen with the ambulance services that we just had? What happens? Do, do you all still work? What, do we just shut the city down? I, I mean, it, it just to, to blatantly come up and just say, don't vote for it, though any kind of resolution is not what we need. What we need is a conversation and an understanding of what is happening, um, and, and shutting it down, if you're not gonna vote for it, then be prepared to answer our questions after this meeting on what you're gonna do, um, when we don't have no money. Thank y'all.
Yeah.
How y'all doing? I'm Marcelle. Um, I just wanted to speak on the agenda, 'cause that's what we're focusing on. Um, I also want to bring up, um, she said enough about the property, as the gentleman said, he just got it, but I think at some point when we're selling these properties to these developers, that we're actually evaluating them and seeing what we can do to assist, 'cause as she said, what can the city do to help with the, the parking lot? Because Mr. McGee spoke up, and he lives by this property, and I understand that your niece rents the unit that he was talking about? So, oh, she doesn't rent the hall anymore? I'm sorry. But at some point, it was rented by somebody in council, but overall, I've never seen, you all did this with the gas station, and you all are building these properties into residential areas, so now you have to rezone and redesign that whole area, because you just gave McGee two parcels, and he already got two parcels next to the parcels you trying to sell now. Um, next, again, the, the resolution for the Hamilton, I love seeing Highland Parkers get buildings, but this price could have been reevaluated since you all allow people to do 10% down to get certain properties based off the, the zoning or whatever property things y'all passed. I don't get why y'all did 10% down on this, um, but it is what it is. The Holy Ghost, same thing, I didn't see a church in that area, just like a parking lot, some equipment, things like that. So at this point, it's just like anybody just buying anything. Um, and then again, this tuxedo, there's nobody standing there. So if you all sell this property...
That's not on the agenda, sir.
I know, but I'm saying again, when Mama Shu, when Mama Shu and Mr. Lopez had their problems, you all said that someone has to reside in the property to buy the lot next to it. You all have been selling lots with no one living next to these properties, and then you won't sell to citizens that's applying, saying as of April or, or May or March, whatever, you're dismissing anybody that applied prior to the timeframe of being here. So I'm staying to the agenda, but I'm just trying to say Ms. Mary Waters is here. Um, as you know, she's running for Congress in this district. Last time, you didn't recognize Eric Sabree. So can you please, Mr. Thomas, I get you upset, but your energy, like, I understand last meeting, then it was some things, you could've, y'all can have y'all own private meetings, talk about it, but at this point...
Thank you, sir. Okay. So let's just make, you made a false statement, nobody on City Council was renting that property, you made a false statement, maybe it was just a slip. So that, yeah, that, that, that is not, that is not the members of this body, so that was a Freudian slip, maybe it was an accident. And in relation to Mr. Sabree, when I'm conducting my meetings, there are a lot of people in the audience. I'm focused on my agenda and on my computer, and I've gone to see, no, sir, no, sir. I've gone to meetings before, I've gone to meetings before, and I've sat in the audience, and I've sat with dignitaries in the city of Detroit, and they were just sitting in the audience as well. What you're asking us to do is not normal, to just get up and stop what you're doing and to recognize people during the course of a meeting. It doesn't happen, people are there for their business, so I don't, I'm not admonishing you, I'm making a statement. People don't stop their meeting. I go on to city Detroit, city council meetings, and they handle their business, and after the meeting is over, they go out and they interface with people. No one ignored Mr. Sabree. We conducted our business, this is our business meeting in the public space. It is not y'all meeting, it's our meeting on your behalf. As an elected official, we are duly appointed to handle the business of the city, and so our goal is to focus on what happens on this side of the line. Okay? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Burgess?
Yes?
I mean, this is, this is citizen participation.
In regard to the GFL, uh, resolution that we were walking on tonight, I bring this to your attention because it means $120,000 in extra money for the city of Highland Park if we do not pass this resolution today. Now I'll go back and explain briefly. As you recall, uh, our citizens have been terribly concerned about GFL services. So last Thursday at 11 o'clock, the mayor and I had a meeting scheduled to meet with GFL, to go over with them once again, the problems with their service. At 9 o'clock on Thursday morning, I received a call from the, my GFL representative informing me that as of later on that day, an announcement would be made to, uh, to the public that GFL was transferring all of its assets for the residential up to a priority. The problem arise, and that priority has agreed to accept all, uh, obligations, contractual obligation that GFL has as of 12, as of 7/1. Our problem is, our contract with GFL runs out on 6/30. So they will not pass our contract on to GFL, and then the city would have to go back to G, to priority and to negotiate a contract. I, the contract that we are permitted for one more year extension with GFL is for 2018 prices. The contract that we would go and present to priority would be in 24, 25 prices, which would mean about $10,000 a month, starting in July, that the city would have to pay for the next year. So I have talked to GFL, and if I can give them, uh, addendum tomorrow morning stating they will do everything they can to put our contract, the one that we should like to pass tonight, to put our contract with the ones that G, uh, that priority will take for the next year. So I, if, if we want to forego, and it is about $120,000, but $10,000 a month, nothing was, uh, kept away from the council, we got it here as quickly as we can, as we could. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
No, we've been working on it today. No, no, we were...
Everything you just said today, Mr. Burgess, you could've told us last week, last...
No, we couldn't. It was, it was not until...
It just happened in the last week.
It was not until Fri, uh, Thursday morning, on the 30th, when GFL made the announcement. We were bringing them in to get on GFL's problems. So, no, we, we did, we learned about it Thursday morning. It was only this afternoon when I received from, uh, an agreement from GFL that if I were to get them a contract tomorrow morning, that they would include in their package, uh, passing our contract on to priority, saving us the $10,000 a month.
Thank you, sir, for that clear.
Mr. Burgess, you, you found out Thursday, y'all said you found out Thursday, right?
Yes.
You, you knew the contract was in it on Thursday, why wasn't us...
No, 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 the contract in, in on to the 30th.
So why wasn't any emergency meeting called on Friday?
We were having a meeting tonight, we, uh, we could get them to something Tuesday morning.
Why... This is, I, I, I'm saying, I ask that question because this is public service, okay? It's one of the most important, it's one of the most important, but you brought us something that we have to read inside of all the 15 seconds and give you a sound answer.
I just wanted the citizens to know the options for not...
I appreciate that, because in business, because in business, things happen on Thursday night that you have to deal with Monday morning, and most adults who have actually run a business know that you run into situations at the end of a week, and you have to deal with that on Monday. You have those situations occur in your own house at the end of the month, where an emergency comes up and you have to take action on it in the next two to three days, and adults can manage that. Yes, sir. How you doing, Council?
And, um, citizens, how are you? I wanted to speak about, um, our budget in terms of the police department because it was brought up. And there was some information, um, that was put out there and I spoke about misinformation before, but this isn't necessarily misinformation, it's just not all of the information. So yes, our overtime budget is significant for this fiscal year. And that's mainly because we do not have a full staff. We, we are, uh, still have 10, approximately 10 vacant positions. The salaries of those 10 vacant positions is approximately $525,000. We're under $400,000 in overtime. However, those spots that are vacant have to be filled and that requires members to come in on overtime to staff it. Now, we're hoping with the recent, um, contract being settled and some other things that we're going to, um, bring more people in in terms of filling our, our vacancies. And we have had some recent applicants, so I think, and we do have people in the academy, so I think we will be successful in reducing the overtime budget. But I think it's also important to point out for the citizens and for everyone else that as of June 1st, which leaves one, uh, one month left of our fiscal year, the police department has a surplus of 700 and I don't want to misspoke, 711,286.26. That's with spending the overtime. So again, I just want to speak of giving the citizens and council all of the information, not just one bad part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional citizens that want to be heard on agenda items.
Council president?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to speak on the GFL, uh, uh, priority contract.
Yes, ma'am.
As Mr. Burgess said on last Thursday, we had a meeting planned for 11 o'clock with GFL to go over the, their, uh, improprieties, what was wrong and how we were gonna fix it, also discuss, uh, the contract. They count, canceled because they made an announcement and it was all over the news, not just Highland Park, but all of their residential customers will be moving to priority. So with that being said, we got the information on what that would look like this morning. And we were able to present it today. We didn't have it last Thursday, we didn't have it last Friday. For us to present something to the council that is inconclusive and to tell you what we think versus what is factual. And if it's not written, it's not so. So we had to bring it in this morning. Mr. Burgess is correct. This contract extension for one year will help us have residential, um, uh, services. But if we do not have a resi, uh, contract, we will not have, and the bottom line is, we will not have residential services until we go through the bidding process and, and which takes 30 to 60 days. And the services will end. So I just want the citizens to understand, this was not done deliberate. This was done by GFL giving us the information. They wouldn't give us the information until they made their announcement. The public announcement, not only for Highland Park, but Detroit, their suburbs, everyone will be switching over to this company. Those that have contracts, that's not ending. What, there will be a smooth transition, but because ours is ending, we have to either extend it or either we have to go back out to bid, which means there will be no services until we get someone else. That's factual. That's all I have.
Well, they'll never make it to tonight's agenda, thanks to you. Do we have any other citizens? Any other citizens that would like to speak before we move into the agenda? I'd like to thank you for your participation. We're gonna move on to item five, that's a table item resolution recommending the revision of the zoning ordinance, chapter 1210.03 regarding planning commission membership. City council, what is your pleasure? Chair is open to take action on item five. Yes, ma'am. That was a resolution to adjust the membership to fit the demographic, bringing the number down to five members instead of seven. This makes it more appropriate for us to have a quorum. As a former planning commissioner, I can tell you getting a quorum for that meeting, for that board can be challenging.
I move to bring back from the table, resolution recommending revisions to zoning ordinance, chapter 1210.03 regarding planning commission membership.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to, to bring these item, item five, the resolution recommending revisions to the zoning ordinance off the table. Chair offer support. Questions to discussion? I have to pull it up. Yep, Ms. Manica, we have, we have a motion on the floor, so it's open for discussion.
I don't see no role, we're bringing it back from the table.
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes, to bring it back from the table.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilpro Tim Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, the item is back on the floor.
I move to vote or to approve the resolution recommending revisions to zoning ordinance, chapter 1210.03 regarding planning commission membership.
Chair offers a second. So the motion is on the floor for the approval of the revisions to the zoning ordinance, chapter 1210.03 regarding planning commission membership. And for members of the audience, that is to adjust the, the body's total membership from seven members down to five to represent our new census data of less than 9,000. Discussion? Questions, concerns? Madam Deputy Kirk, could you please call a roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
The floor was open.
I was reading from last week, my apology, but my answer was, yeah.
Councilpro Tim Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
No, again, a stalemate. I'm sorry, yes, I meant, yes, excuse me. I'm boiling in this chair right now. And thanks to channel four, the whole state is watching. We're on the next item, moving on to item six, the adoption of the 2024, 2025 budget. City council, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the proposed budget, the proposed budget for the period July 1st to June 30th, 2025 with the ability to make amendments later.
There's a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica for the approval of the adoption of the 2024, 2025 budget, with the opportunity to make amendments in the future as needed. The chair offers support. Floor is open, questions?
Uh, I got questions.
Go right ahead.
Ms. Manica?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe before we take this vote, maybe we can all set aside on Monday of next week and all members of council along with the administration when she returns and the department head, so we can sit down and go line item by line, item, work out every possible bug that there is. Our deadline is up until the 30th of this month. So we have another council meeting on the 17th. I just want us to be on the same page and work out these bugs and come to a good understanding. There's a middle ground here without it being my way or your way. There's a middle ground that we can stand on and everybody can walk away from the table happy. But if you're gonna force this, I don't think it's gonna go.
Okay, so.
I really would like for us to, I, I would like for you to take back your motion and, uh, and possibly make a motion to move this to a special meeting on Monday of next week where everybody can sit down and the budget is the only thing to be discussed. Nothing else on the agenda, but the budget. We go through it line item by line item. In two hours, we can get out of here and be done with it and the budget to be approved because everybody, I have a clear understanding and all of the questions and concerns will be answered.
So.
I don't want the budget.
I work a job, I won't be here next Monday, I'll be in Lansing. We had a month to go over this, we had a workshop on it, they gave us this document, we're adults, they gave us this document a month ago.
I understand.
They put in color coded charts and coloring book examples, so we had it for a month. We had this document for a month and we had some of the best accountants that we could muster coming here.
All I'm simply saying is, is we've had the document for a month.
Correct.
And every question we have asked, we have get to get an answer on. Nobody's come back to us. The finance department didn't even waste their time to talk to us. Nobody's told us.
That's inaccurate, they were here, we did a whole workshop.
Okay, uh, uh, at, at the last, at, at the last meeting when we was having a public hearing, I didn't even know that Ms. Eleanor was sitting over in the corner. Carl wasn't here that day. I didn't know she was sitting behind that podium. She never opened her mouth and said two words to us.
Whose fault is that, that you couldn't see the woman?
It's not my fault. I asked where the finance is and she didn't say nothing.
Ms. Manica, go ahead, please.
All I'm simply saying is, I think that we can come together. On another day, it's one day, one more day is not gonna kill us.
Ms. Manica, go ahead, please.
This is the best way to go.
We have a motion on the floor for the approval of the adoption, the, the adoption of the 2024, 2025 budget. It was made by Councilwoman Manica, the chair has offered a second. Ms. Manica, you had additional comments?
I do, so I hear you and I, I don't want the budget to pay. Because if we go with a stalemate, it's not a fair.
And the Gleewa contract comes apart and public safety comes apart.
So listen, I do see Carl's here. So is there any specific, specific, Mr. Ashafi, that maybe Carl can answer today? Not, not going through every single one, I don't know if we actually have a question around, actually, every single one. But the most important thing you would like to have answered, um, today?
Ms. Manica, I, you know, you know, we have asked each one of the time, time again.
Well, he's here, so maybe.
I understand that, I understand that. I, I get, I just think that if we sit down collectively and work together as opposed to going at each other's throats, point and what's ever, maybe we can accomplish something here. And this could turn out really well and really good for everybody. Everybody can walk away from the table happy. I don't see a problem with that. If he's not gonna be here on Monday, then we can make it for Tuesday. If he's not gonna be here Tuesday, we can make it for Wednesday. Whatever day he wants to make it, we can make it for that day.
Okay.
But I think we need to sit down and go over this budget thoroughly.
So we should stop having a conversation about what he can do because he works two jobs. He don't sit around and antagonize the people in these departments. He was here for the budget meeting. He knows how to call the finance department and have these conversations. He spent 10 years in college. So if we are to the point where after a month of deliberation, after a workshop, this, this is our second time doing this. This is the second time doing this. This is our second time in a year doing this. And the antagonism has come from the District 3. Yes, ma'am, point of order taken.
Say I want the budget to stop. There's nothing wrong with the budget tonight.
Yes, ma'am, go right here. We have a motion on the floor, we want to stick to the item on the order.
Forgot what's the motion, what's the motion?
This is the motion for the adoption of the 2024, 2025 budget with amendment capacity. Additional questions?
I am going to draw my motion.
Chair will withdraw support. Item six is on the table for city council to deliberate upon. And for the people that are sitting in the audience, this is our second go around. We're not new to this process. Last year, our budget meeting was so embarrassing that it made the national news. And here we are repeating that process and the antagonist is the same person that it was last year. We have, we have talented professionals that have provided us with an extensive review and they have offered themselves in their offices. We've had a workshop. The door is always open.
So I would like to know if I can ask Carl, I'm sorry, Carl, what's your last name?
We have no item on the floor too, ma'am, just so that you know. The chair is waiting on a motion for item six.
I'll make a motion to move this, uh, to move this item to a special meeting on Wednesday of next week.
What's that date?
That date is going to be.
Ms. Manica, I'm in Lansing, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday of next week. I don't make my schedule based on the whims of other people, I make my schedule a month in advance. Just like this meeting was scheduled for this budget over a month ago.
The motion, I, I would like to make the motion, I would like to make the motion to have, uh, to have a special meeting for this particular item on Friday of this week. When council president is back, I, I'm, I'm sorry, of, of next week. Next week, Friday, when council president is back, so that he may be here to participate in that meeting. No arguments, no complaints, no nothing.
I second.
So that, so now that the motion is on the floor, let's go ahead and let's talk about this. Like I said before, we did this last year, we did this last year and it was such a painful process that it took three or four meetings. We brought in all of our financial professionals. They presented to us, the department heads discussed at length each of their particular line items. This year, we knew the budget was coming. Our finance department prepared an extensive illustration, charts and bar graphs. Instead of having a balance sheet, which is the normal procedure, we went above and beyond. And we were here for an hour with nothing to discuss but the budget. And Carl and Ms. Eleanor said, our doors are open. Our doors are open. You can come and see us. And in all the times and during that meeting, no one came to ask them any serious business questions. I spoke to Ms. Eleanor about the budget. All it took was me picking up the phone and calling her just to find out when we were gonna have the workshop. We worked on the workshop for the budget in February. It is now June. An adult can conduct themselves in a reasonable fashion and conduct business for the city. It is unconscionable and I hope the state and the governor's office is watching after they stitched together this water deal, the possibility that we're going to be without a budget and without trash collection and without an assessor, as we were with the two of these council people acting as they did and we went the year without quotes for grass cutting and snow removal. There is no item on the floor. You know what? That's right, there, there is a motion, they made that motion.
Before you make the motion, I just want to know, or I don't want to know, I just want, uh, Mr. Ashafi?
Yes, ma'am.
Just can you point out to us that Carl is here?
Yeah, what do we discuss?
You don't have to, you don't have to say every line, but is it the most important things you want him to be able to explain? If we have that underneath.
Most important things that I want him to be able to explain is one, the pension to overtime. It was achieved recently, uh, touched on, that includes overtime for both the police and the fire departments, that they're fully staffed. Not the police department, they're still working on it. There are a bunch of line items in here that are listed as miscellaneous, again, I admit that I haven't explained to you. I just, I want to go over to make sure that as the representatives of the city that we are wanting to be doing our diligence, the state gave us a gift. And by them giving us a gift, we now have to show them that we're gonna be physically responsible with the gift they gave. We're out of there, we got one place to go, but uh, so let's go forward. Let's make sure that everything is in order and that way I can leave the table happy, you can leave the table happy, everybody can be happy. I don't see. Everybody can be happy. I don't see why we argue. I don't see why their name calling. I don't see any reason whatsoever. For all that the council president said. I simply ask, I don't want the budget to fail.
Those things that I said were facts.
The same thing for the water department as well, but me and Mr. Garrett have, have discussed that in thoroughly. And he told me that he would have it all together for me, right, Mr. Garrett? Alrighty. So you can have that at the next meeting, boy. Okay, if possible.
Restate your motion. We'll get to it. Restate your motion, sir.
Okay, I make a motion to move item. Six eight. To a special meeting. On June the fourteenth, two thousand twenty four. In which everybody will be back in town, the mayor, she, she'll be back in town. All of the, uh, all of the necessary people will be back here along with you, sir. And we can all sit down and hash this budget out and get it passed.
And that, that motion was given support by Council Proton?
Yes. Are we gonna start at seven or six?
We can start at six if you like. Cause I know y'all like to get in and get out as early as possible. Or you can do seven, there's something you guys.
No. Um, Madam Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll on? So we are not voting on item six. I want to make the people, make the people aware in the audience. This was the agenda item. And Councilman Ashafi and Council Proton Robinson have come up with something, some alternative on their own. They have made a motion that deviates from item six. This is not on the agenda. They're attempting to change the agenda right now. And what they're recommending is that we have an additional third, fourth, or fifth meeting on the budget that we've already gone over in the last month. And they want to have that meeting on June fourteenth at six o'clock. And they want all of the finance department and the mayor's office and the business administrator. And these volunteer police officers and the police chief and the MCA to all be here as well. On short notice because they decided that they want to have this. All of these, all of us have to be here for that. That's the motion that's on the floor. Madam Deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
No. Motion carries. We're going to item seven of the community development, seven A. This is a resolution to sell three vacant lots at forty one, forty two, and forty four Bearisford to DMC Property Management LLC. For fifteen hundred dollars. City council, what's your pleasure?
This item was table for. It has to come back table.
Surprise, say now this is on the table, right?
Mr. Claburn?
It says, oh, it says two table. Yes, it says two table resolution.
What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, we gotta do the wind down. The item up for discussion is item seven, Andrew Community Development, the resolution to sell three vacant lots forty one, forty two, and forty four. Bearsford to DMC Property Management LLC for fifteen hundred dollars.
Thank you guys for like and support. My motion last time was today.
Give me another thirty seconds.
I'm sorry.
Try to be consistent with this. Ladies and gentlemen, the community development item seven A was brought to the floor and proposed to city council for action. No action has been taken in the approved timeframe. Therefore, action set the item seven A dies for a lack of support. Moving on to item seven B, the resolution to approve the sale of commercial Latin structure located at one, two, zero, one, one Hamilton to Bobby D Lewis Senior. On behalf of an entity to be formed. For seventy five hundred dollars. That is the sale price. City council, what is your pleasure on item seven B?
I move to. Approve the resolution to approve sale of commercial lot and structure located in one, two, zero, one, one Hamilton to Bobby. D Lewis Senior on behalf of an entity to be formed. With discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to approve the resolution to sell the commercial lots. The commercial lot at one, two, zero, one, one Hamilton to Bobby D Lewis Senior on behalf. Of an entity to be formed, to be formed later for seventy five hundred dollars. The chair will offer support to get this item out on the floor to discuss. Uh, Ms. Manica, the floor is yours, if you would.
Okay. Um, I think earlier, just that conversation somewhere else, WCA came up. Who was WCA? I don't think everybody knows him or.
And then for the audience at home, before we even get started, I want to show the citizens where this particular piece of property is. The old caucus club. Okay, that, that purple square right there at Hamilton and Tuxedo is the location of. The former caucus club, the renowned caucus club. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I just wanted, the question earlier came up, who was, or what did WCA stand and who was it?
Yeah, Wayne County assessing. I'm the assessor Doug Shaw. Our owner and WCSS.
I just want to make sure everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you didn't have your say in it, I mean, you don't have to.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
So was it for Mr. Lewis or for CED?
Uh, for, uh, for Mr. Shaw. Are you going, Ms. Manica?
Yes. Uh, you might gonna ask the same ones. I wanna ask a point. Okay.
Yeah.
I, I was last, I just know I need him. So you're saying that property is only worth seven thousand dollars, seven thousand five hundred dollars?
Correct. Based on my estimate, yes.
Based on your estimate, and that including land?
That's including land and building. Um, what makes it difficult to determine an estimate of a property is the interior is unknown. And based on the exterior, the condition of that building, more than likely, the interior is in very poor condition.
Urban exploring took place.
In a big. And a big proponent, uh, component of the valuation estimate is cost to cure. Cost to cure of a structure is meaning, what does it take? What does it cost to bring something back into usable, usable condition again? And with that property, there's a large cost to cure. If that's not a question for me to answer, that would be more of a building ordinance question. I don't know the structural soundness of the, of the building, if it can be shored up in a fashion to make it usable again. I do know it's gonna be a sizable amount of money that an investor is gonna have to contribute to that property to make it usable.
And on. You said that this includes, this must include the parking lot.
Correct.
Is there a second parking lot?
Just, just the one.
Okay, alright, was there a shot?
Okay, yeah. So, um, Mr. Shaw, we, you had a conversation earlier. And, um. I pointed out to you that with, with properties that are listed. It requires that we sell that property. The charter requires, the charter clearly states that we must sell that property at market value. Now, you just assessed it, but you told me that you would need an appraiser to get a market value.
Uh, that's correct. An alternative to, the assessors required to assess all properties in the city of Highland Park at fifty percent of market value. Or true cash value. Um, this is a little different what the city is asking me to do. They're asking me to determine a market value. Based on the condition as it is now. The assessments, right. Assessments are based on average or usual, use, usual condition. And that's not the case with this. But also what inherits this problem with valuation is. The property isn't typical, as say, like you were to sell a house and you would hire a realtor and they would market it and try to. ascertain the highest value possible. Cause it's their best interest to try to determine the highest best price. That's not the case with this. These are properties on a list and people can come forward and take a look at the list and review the properties and. Come to approach the city. It's not something that's marketed. So it hinders the market value in some fashion. Um, what we had talked about is we've had properties like this in the past. Um, two or three come to mind that the city has hired an independent fee appraiser. To determine the valuation of the property. And a fee appraiser is very similar to what you have when you go to get a mortgage for either a house or a commercial building. This would be a commercial building. It would require a fee appraiser knowledgeable and experienced in commercial and industrial real estate. The only price or the only negative with that is it costs money. You're gonna have to pay a fee appraiser money and they're typically fifteen hundred dollars for a property like this.
And I'd be, uh, I'd be suggesting to you that is called the, as long as the person is purchasing. So it's really not a loss for us. My concern is, is that we're not marketing the city as we should be marketing it. We're not getting the type of appraisals that we should be getting. So I seriously feel that I got no problem with buying a property. My concern is, is that we're leaving a lot of money sitting on the table. So, okay, so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
One second. So, uh, so, um, I did a little bit of, of research, you know, myself. And I called a, a, a realtor friend of mine, you know. Hamilton is fastly becoming extremely valuable like wool. You have everybody in the mother that's buying up on Hamilton. Okay, they're trying to be their hands on everything. And, um, a friend of mine just sold his lot. He had a lot on Hamilton. He just sold the lot for ninety thousand dollars. Okay. Another friend of mine just bought a building on Hamilton. That's a quarter of the size of the caucus club. And he paid like eighty grand for it. Okay, the, uh, the, uh, old Loomis building just sold for, for one point nine million on Hamilton. One point nine million, that's a lot of money. Okay, and the property is steadily rising in the city. Okay, so for us to. Sell the caucus club, not only based on the fact of the condition of it. But also for its inherent historical value here in the city. I think that seventy five hundred dollars is very low.
Yeah, that is, like we had talked about before, maybe that's a situation where you hire an appraiser to help guide you through with the valuation of that property. Appraisers also gonna look at cost to cure. They're gonna look at those properties he talked, talked about. I'm not sure the condition of those properties. In some cases, like we had talked about before, sometimes a property is more valuable if the building's demolished, if it's just removed. Because the cost to cure is too great and there's a demolition cost involved, which then detracts from the value of the land. If you have the same property that's a vacant lot. And you don't have a building that needs demolition, that vacant lot is worth more.
I would be more comfortable with the sale.
So, so council can request an appraisal.
Yes.
Per the ordinance.
Just ma'am, Ms. Manica, please.
Yeah, uh, uh, I, I would say this, uh, it, uh, it would be nice to have an appraisal. Before we vote.
I think that, I, I agree with that appraisal. But, uh, my other question for us. Where, this is actually, I guess my, it says, on behalf of an entity to. A purchaser. So we're selling it to a realtor to then find somebody to, to buy it.
Is this, is Mr. Lewis here?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, where are you, sir? You, you've been pretty quiet. We, we're making a decision on something related to you. I think you might want to come and join us here. Ms. Manica, you have further questions for Mr. Lewis?
Uh, thank you, honorable council members, for allowing me to speak on behalf of this project. Um, an entity to be formed later is just a protection to me as an individual. Um, I am a son of this city. I went to Liberty Elementary School, Ford Middle School, two years at the high school on Glendale. And two years at the first time ever school with no windows on Woodward. So. Um, I am here. It gives me great honor and privilege to have the possibility. To explore restoring this historic building. My goal would be to operate it as the C four Caucus Club Community Center. But I can't do any other things that involve the money that would take to do all of the things. That you would have to do to evaluate if that's possible without possession.
So, again. You're buying it and you haven't procured any funding to do.
I do have line of fight, of site for funding, but all of that is predicated on site control.
So, so psych, having, having site control, ownership in, in the form of a D is the precursor to sitting down with any. Any financial organization and building a capital stack. If you don't own it.
So, so in the contract, it's the ten percent is not refunded. And that they do due diligence and he finds that it's something that he can't move on, he forfeits his deposit, he doesn't have to finish. But site control gives him, gives him control of it to do what he needs to do. To get the finance and then do all the checks and everything he needs to do to continue on. That's what the purchase agreement and development agreement owes him to. And it's also a reversion clause to where. If he does follow through, pay the rest of the balance and doesn't do what he say in a set time. Whatever he did is forfeited and, and the building comes back to the city.
That is my next question.
Yeah, this is a reversion.
We have set time.
I, it's in there. I'm not sure.
Uh, awesome. Ms. Manica, take it, take, just for, as, as for a grain of salt. Um, building a capital stack for a black developer in the city of, in southeastern Michigan is extremely laborious. At this, at this place in history. It is, it is an immense challenge for black developers to be able to. Move into a room and to start to build a capital stack. And should we approve this, it may require him to come back and ask for an extension. I'm just, I'm just saying from my own personal experience. Nobody has a worse moment than a developer where you think everything is fine and something changes and you have to start over. So. To your point about the reversion clause, that is important. But reality is they, most developers are having to ask for extensions in the city of Detroit. A lot of that is going on because factors change.
So, so does that, so we need that anytime. My, my. My, my, I'm having a little reservation.
Then you know what, ma'am? I was gonna say, we can, we can pull it off, we can pull it off.
And I don't want, because I do want to see black development. I want to see black development in everything. I don't want this to be. So, I'm going to, be serious. I have to, for my notion, make a motion to table it so that you have opportunity to get some of that other information that the council members want, so that it will very well represented here to pass.
Chair will withdraw support and offer support for your new motion.
With information, this is what you, you asked before in the press.
And he's not gonna give you a yay before he gets the break. I'm just, oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
So I know what we need to do.
Yeah.
I mean, you have, you have. And you still got your authority to request. I'll wait to prove the charter. That's fine, that's fine.
So the motion, the motion.
Using the assessor.
Right.
For what he says is market value, probably the event of, you do have, the council does have the right to ask for an appraisal and.
The Shaw, he mentioned that he does go independently.
Who, who, who will be responsible for that expenditure?
Yeah, that was my question.
We'll go back.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to table item seven B. That motion was made by Councilwoman Manica, was supported by the chair. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll on tabling item seven B?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yesterday.
Councilwoman Ma- Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. This item will be tabled until such time that CED director comes back with us with the appropriate information. Uh, Mr. Lewis, we will be in touch with you soon. Thank you so much for your patience, sir.
I think the other thing was, uh, instance, kind of I.
I, I just wanted to speak on that for just a moment.
I give you a minute, go ahead.
Okay, this venture would be at great risk to me. So that one line that you're referring to, an entity to be formed later is so that they don't come and take my house. You know, there, you know, that is to protect me as an individual. So you form the company. The company is the one that goes and talks to the finance people, talks to the contractors, talks to the construction folks. So it is, um, a pass through from me to that company. So that's all that verbiage means.
Well, you have it.
I do.
That's the Parker Prime?
No, Lewis Holdings Development. Lewis Holdings Development works directly with an established developer. He just built a seventy-eight unit apartment building right behind the storied Michigan Central Building. That is my advisor. Um, so I have the means and the resources to bring this to market.
You talking about Cliff?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Cliff Brown.
Yeah, you don't have to. He just, if, if there was a, in development and it's a brother, he's Godzilla when it comes to being a developer. He is the real deal. He is the real deal.
I am on his staff as the controller.
Yeah, he is the real deal.
So who's the controller?
I am on his staff as the controller for his guy.
His development company, yes.
I guess now I feel like, I know we're telling each other to be tabled, but that's a developer, right?
So he's my development advisor that I'm working for now. And my company, Lewis Holdings Development, also has, um, um, sizable experience. I have commercial building in southwest Detroit. I, um, own, um, entities in Mount Clemens, Michigan, um, Three Rivers, Michigan. Lewis Holdings Development is the partner and part owner of a residential management company and we manage a portfolio of over a hundred residential, um, buildings.
So I'm gonna stop you right there, Mr. Lewis. But forgive me, Ms. Manica, I want to go ahead and move on and finish our community, the community, economic, economic development. Thank you so much, sir. We will see you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. Thank you also, Mr. Shaw. So we're moving on to item seven C. That's the resolution to sell two vacant residential lots at one twenty-six and one thirty Kendall to Holy Ghost Temple Church of God and Christ for two thousand dollars. City Council, what is your pleasure on item seven C?
I think there was a question earlier about, or comment about, I think I've heard it a couple of times in the church. Anyway, you can throw that up. The show, relative.
Absolutely. Okay, and I have one twenty-six Kendall, which is off open, and the name of the church, Holy Trinity Temple. Holy Ghost, forgive me, my apologies. Okay. And so.
Is there a church member here today? Is he there?
So this is where the church is located. This is Oakman Boulevard. These are where the lots are, behind the church. The lots are, yeah, so the lots are behind the church. They're on the street behind the church. And as I was working here, there, there is no one from the church here today?
No. But.
Okay, okay.
They're on the next street behind the church?
Yep, so the church is in front of them. The church is here. Here are the vacant lots, behind the church. And as this map shows, there are no structures on these lots. It's just, anytime you see a gray shape, that represents a structure. Hold on. Three sixty. So these are the lots behind the church.
And that's the church, the building, it's like, five, five, and we did that.
Yes, ma'am, I believe so. Go nine. Oh. So that is the church and these are the two lots behind the building. Uh, City Council, what is your pleasure? I still have, the, the door is open for City Council to take action on item seven C.
I moved to a resolution to sell the two vacant residential lots at one twenty-six and one thirty Kendall, Holy Ghost Temple Church of God and Christ to a parking lot for the church. I'm just adding this.
Yep.
Because there's no space there. That's why I wanted to see it out. If I read this correctly, they don't have parking for their church. Not gonna be enclosed. Would that provide, because there is a residential place right next to it?
Uh, actually, this is a pretty barren area.
No, 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 to the church. I'm explaining why they need that for park.
Okay, yeah, it has a residence here. I think it's, um, so there's the church, there's a housing development next door, and this church has absolutely no parking. Good call on that. Yeah, they have absolutely no parking. So there's a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Manica to sell the two vacant residential lots at one twenty-six and one thirty Kendall. The chair will offer support. Any additional questions or concerns on item seven C? Mr. Ashafi.
Council President, last year we denied three applicants who were looking for lots across the alley that's blocked from.
The relevance of that is?
Why?
Why?
It's, it's a direct question. I'm asking a direct question. The relevance of that is? It's, it's. This is a normal conversation, but go ahead.
It's not a normal conversation.
So, go ahead.
Anyway. Last year, we denied three people who came through here asking for lots across the alley. I'm, I was simply going to say, I'm not saying yea, yea, nay, I'm just wondering if we're now setting a precedent to open the door for something else. That's all I was simply going to say. All that extra you had was unnecessary.
Do you mind, no problem?
Please. Director Piper?
So according to the ordinance, we are able to sell those lots. From my understanding, I wasn't here last year, but from my understanding, the way they came to council, they came as side lots.
Okay.
But they're not side lots. So they're being sold as residential lots and we are able to sell residential lots. So you could sell them as, um, adjacent side lots, side lots, or, um, just lots. So according to the words, we are able to do this.
Okay, are you paying a full amount of this two thousand dollars or are they market based?
This, I believe, is the full payment. So, so the difference, yeah, so the difference, so when you're doing a residential adjacent side lot, you don't have to do the development intake form.
Right.
So they, that, what you just turned to is a development intake form.
Right.
So that separates it.
Okay.
That's what makes it just a lot versus a residential side lot. It's in your packet also.
Oh, no, that is, that is.
I'll see you, Madam Pro Tim. I see your hand, please, ma'am. Yeah.
Councilwoman Robinson. Yes, ma'am.
A lot.
I looked at him, yes.
Did you see the signs where Highland Park stops? That was a.
Those, just because the sign is placed there, does, just because the sign is placed there, doesn't mean that that's where Highland Park ends or begins. It's a sign right here on Massachusetts that say, welcome to Highland Park. And it's a sign, oh, John Knar. So there, I, I can't tell you why they placed the sign there, but though the records, the real estate summary, everything calls them lots, city of Highland Park.
So here.
And, um.
That's right, I see your hand.
You can tell by the addresses also. Okay.
For those, uh, people who would like to see the boundary of the city, I'm gonna go ahead and show you on the screen where the boundary of the city is and that these lots are in fact inside the boundary of the city of Highland Park. That dark line that you see is the outline of the city of Highland Park. Those red, that red lot that you see is inside the city of Highland Park. To the right is the city of Highland Park, to the left is the city of Detroit. And the address says, on Langreat, one two six Kendall, Highland Park, four eight two zero three. Additional questions, comments, concerns for item seven A? I mean, seven C, ma'am, go ahead.
A, a little bit earlier, it was something about selling at fifty percent.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
The land value.
The who?
Land value.
Not, I don't know anything about fifty percent.
Okay, so he was assessed, or he assessed the land value three thousand.
Hmm, this should be two, it's a thousand a lot.
So that's.
So the two thousand, what?
So we're not selling it based off of land value, we're selling it based off of what?
The assessor valued it at, that's why it's, it's in there.
And that's what I said, he said something like fifty percent. Am I right? Did you say about fifty percent? I'm, I just want to make sure I'm right here.
Yeah, let me clear that up a little bit. The assessor, with the assessment role, must sell properties at, assess properties at fifty percent of market value. So that's where you heard the fifty percent. That's for the assessment. What you're looking for is the market value. So you're looking for the hundred percent value and that's what you're provided is the hundred percent value. But for assessing purposes, the assessment role and for taxation, it's based on fifty percent of market value. But that's not what you're trying to achieve in the land sales. You're trying to achieve market value, which is the hundred percent value.
Are you asking me or are you telling me?
No, that's what I'm telling you.
Okay, I, I don't know, I was not sure your statement.
Yeah, the fifty.
You should be trying to achieve market.
The hundred percent market.
Which is, which you get.
Yes.
Which is the thousand dollars.
Don't even say he gave me a sense of value.
No.
With the assessment role, for assessing purposes.
Two thousand dollars.
No.
Not.
The market.
You have the market value.
That's what you said.
I assess it fifty percent of market value, but that's not what you provided tonight. You're provided market value. I was talking about assessments.
So then make me understand, what's the difference between land value and market value?
And I use the land portion of the property. And when you talk about value, that's the market value of that property. For instance, those would have an assessment at half the market value of the property. So if they're saying a hu- thousand dollars is the market value, assessment would be five hundred dollars.
They're saying the land value is three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Then the assessment would be half of that in a perfect world.
That's what, that's what the project costs, not put in land.
I promise you that.
So, thi- this is, this is a thousand and a thousand. This came from him as the market value. On their form is the money that they, show me what, what's that?
It says thirty-eight thousand two hundred for the project. Is that what you're asking for?
Right, that's what, I don't know, that's what she said. Where are you talking about?
I'm looking at it.
Yeah, may I approach the people?
This right here, this, this right here.
Yeah, that's.
So you know where I'm looking at.
That's historic information. These properties are currently exempt because they're city owned, so they don't have an assessed value. But that's historical information that does not pertain for the purpose of this meeting or selling the property because the property is based on what I had said before. You're trying to sell it to an individual, you're not marketing it to the entire community or entire region. So there's a difference between the two. Okay?
Okay, so when you're developing application, it says that the approximate cost of the government is thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars.
Slats your camera.
Huh?
Hmm, that's what it says.
Okay, I thought you said something.
Not to you.
Uh, okay, so, yeah, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars for the, the, the government anything more. Uh, they're planning to, uh, it says here, under, under project description, it says developers want to install parking lots and space, um, sorry, and keep bringing space.
For community events, right.
Okay, so here at the bottom here, it says project, I mean, it says not yet ongoing. Okay, and it says proposed project start to be determined. It's the answer they gave.
Right.
And then it says project completion to be determined.
So they have been requesting this property for some time, so it's hard to, it, it's hard for them to determine how and when and when it can be completed until they have access to the property. But all of the properties that we do sell, they do come with reverters and we are tracking the developers as to their status. So if we give this property up and they, they're unable to complete it in the timeframe, it will be back reverted to the city. So a- again, like, it is real hard to pull funds and do developments without site control. This allows them site control. There's kind of nowhere around it, so.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica, supported by the chair. We've had extensive deliberation on it. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the item on, we call the roll on item seven C?
Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion fails.
Will we move on to item eight in engineering? It's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of addition and deletion of certain major and local streets within the city of Highland Park Public Right-of-Way under Act 51, Miles Certification for Cities and Villages. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing.
Yeah, eight, resolution authorizing acceptance.
Of addition and deletion for certain major and local, uh, streets within the city of Highland Park Public Right-of-Way under the Act 51 Village Certification for Cities and Villages.
Thank you very much. The chair will offer support. Is there discussion? Questions, ma'am, go right ahead.
Already know. Let me give you a quick summary, because we had some questions the last time that this came about. And then I actually, uh, I, I went and met, uh, Councilman Ashafi out there just to kind of explain what we're, what we're doing. So now, what happened was, is we had, we got a certified resolution on, on 415. Uh, we submitted that to MDOT, because that's how the process goes. We submitted to them, they came back with a couple of comments. So that's why we're back tonight. What, what they brought, what they brought up was one of the streets in the Means Group Development was, was not a part of the roads to be deleted, which was Lincoln. So Lincoln is the one that kind of cuts right down where the building was. So that was one. The other one was the Service Drive, which is not, the Davidson Service Drive, which is not Highland Park, it's Wayne County. So they said, you need to remove that from your application. But then, they said, well, we're going to have you add some additions. They had us add everything over Oakland Park, so the Oakland Park, Oakland Court, Connecticut, so the other side of Connecticut, right? And then that little stretch of Cottage Grove. So the deletions, the additions ended up to the tune of 42,000 on the good Highland Park. So they said, remove this, add this in, and so now we're here to get another certified resolution to be able to accept this additional 42,000 on Act 51. That's, that's the summary of what happened.
I called you about this, because a lot of people say, what do you mean? Move this, because no Cottage Grove is named after.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So people may probably, Jackie Wilson's gonna be.
No, it's not. It's actually, it's actually coming in. Jackie Wilson is coming in, and we're getting revenue for that street where we were not before.
Additional questions before I call for the vote? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll for item eight under engineering?
Councilman Ashafi? Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our agenda. We're going to move into citizens' participation. Again, after what I saw last week, we're going to go two minutes and one second. So if there are citizens who would like to address council for two minute and one second, you are more than welcome to do so. Please line up at the podium. Uh, my, my, now I want everyone to be aware, my stringance is, is related to the level of disrespect that this council has endured over the last few meetings. I'm going to be by the book and very narrow, because in the past, we had people abuse the city council. So two minutes and one second is what we allow. It is one second longer than you get in the city of Detroit. I figure we would try to one-up them the best that we could do, so at that one second, okay? And please state to the hand, Ms. Waters. All right, sir, I won't put the, I won't hit the button until you say your name and start talking.
Thank you, Council President. This is Bobby Lewis. I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things for the record. When I brought up my advisor, I consider him a mentor and a friend. I just don't want to give the incorrect perception that him or his company in any way was a part of me bringing my proposal to this body. Um, Madam Councilwoman Manica, you did point to Parker Pride Foundation, which is a, a community-based group that in my evaluation of what possible things could be done with this particular building, I talked about the C4 Caucus Club Community Center. Um, they, um, would be a part of evaluating if that was something that we could do with this building. Um, the president of that organization, Sidney Spike, is here, and I think he might want to take two minutes to just speak on um, possible collaborations with my organization in that regard.
Thanks. Before you go leave too, sir, Mr. Brown has also been an advisor for me. He is an exceptional developer, an exceptional human being, and knowing that you're working with him says a lot about capacity of looking for people who actually know the business. And so he has also been, it's full disclosure, he's also been an advisor for me as well.
Thank you for those kind words.
Thank you. Sir, if you would state your name, I won't start your time until you state your name.
Okay, Michael Simmons.
Go right ahead, Mr. Simmons.
All right, uh, first thing I, I would like to say is, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman, uh, Manica. Yes, uh, saying, saying that you encourage black developers. Well, uh, my family home, we're fixing it up, and, uh, you know, we are going to develop that. But the thing is, in the block before us, we got eight rundown houses with trees growing up through them. I want to know, and, uh, three on our block, I want to know, how can we get those houses tore down?
What's your block?
Grand.
And it's your block?
Uh, uh-huh, uh, uh, grand, uh, it's the second block, bu- but the first block is pretty dilapidated.
First block off of Woodward?
Yes.
So there is a development happening in that first block. And I think Council President is writing down that information to give it to CED or an appropriate person, so that we can answer you correctly.
Oh, okay, al- also like, like on our block in between second and third, it's a house that, that's been, uh, leaning for 30 years with trees growing up through it. Then there's another house on that same side of the, of the street. The back is collapsed a little bit, and the front is up. We need all of that stuff gone, so our block can look beautiful.
So, um, yeah, I'm sure that Council President is writing down that information on that street, and then he will be giving it to probably the respective person. I can only assume that's ordinance.
Ordinance.
Take a look at it and look at those places, so then they can go for it.
Okay.
Also, CED, it might be a person.
Oh, oh, okay, yes. Because they're very dangerous, and they also found a dead body in, uh, one of those homes a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you very much, sir.
Michael, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. My name is Mike Chodri, and I am the President and CEO of DMC Property Management, DMC Group. I came, uh, in the last meeting, and, uh, my item was tabled, and I'm, uh, willing to, um, develop that piece of land which we are looking for, because I need parking lots. The, uh, banquet hall, which is a 499 capacity, does not have enough parking lot. So I'm not able to rent out that place. Um, I had a party a year ago, and we had to park all over the streets. And, uh, this time, our staff did not agree to park on the streets, so I'm really requesting, if it is required, I can pay, you know, $1,500 a lot, but I need the lot. I can clean up the lot, and I can make sure it's a fenced parking lot and will be done in 30 days. I have the funds ready to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Counsel, Sidney Spike. Uh, I want to thank you guys for participating and helping the Parker Pride Foundation put on one of the most successful parades Highland Park has seen in a long time. I want to thank you personally, uh, brother, you, you, you really stepped up, man. You guys really float. I wish the young lady was here, so we can, I can thank her as well. Uh, definitely want to thank you. Me and you had private conversations, people didn't know, but thank you for what you did to make this happen. And bring the people that we needed to, uh, pull this off. I want to thank you for that. Um, my colleague, group member, Parker Pride, he's a, uh, relative. I'm a salesman. We got school teachers, police officers, firefighters. Parker Pride is put together with serious people to get things done. He's trying to acquire the Caucus Club. It was an idea I had years ago. I've been writing and trying to fight for it for the longest, hoping that it would never turn into a weed house or grow house or the things that's going on in the city. If you guys know who we are, Parker Pride, we are eager, have ambition to make things happen. We find people to put things together. This young man here, he belongs to a group of individuals that put things together. You know him by his, his, the people that he spoke about. They're going to help us get this thing together, if you guys approve it. Um, we understand that the 7,500 is a low ball price. We get that. Uh, me and, uh, Khashafi walked at those grounds. The roof is gone. The basement's gone. It's just four walls. If anybody comes in and get that building, they're going to demolish it and turn it into something that's not owned or grew through Highland Park. I'm a Parker. We all are Parkers in Parker Pride Foundation. We just created 501(c)(3) where we're moving fast, and we're trying to acquire someplace we can do not only meetings, we can also have a community center and something for the kids, because there's a park across the street. Please think hard on this, and help us get this building if you can.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, my name is Ernest T. Little, just like Ernest T. Ford. And what got me more than anything else, Liberty School. If you know Brighton Street at Jocelyn, that gray house, my uncle Clifford Little and rode to live there, and I know some of us have projects there. And I'm a Phi Beta Sigma, so you know I'm a man. So, and Robinson knows me from Senior Citizens and stuff, and I know the city clerk, but I know this is just Highland Park. But I do know I have to represent Highland Park, and I've walked Highland Park, and I know Highland Park. I didn't just get here last week. I was at the parade and all like that. And you got to remember, one important thing is this, and not only will I represent Highland Park, I have to represent Detroit, Hamtramck, and Highland Park. But Highland Park is the key for my election, because y'all know me, hopefully.
You're talking about?
I'm running for state representative.
Okay, so you, you.
This is nonpartisan. You are all nonpartisan people.
We are nonpartisan.
But remember one important thing, if you're going up to Lansing, you need a voice like mine up in Lansing. Somebody, because I was an assessor. I actually was a building inspector, housing inspector for the city of Detroit. I know about the lit laws. And another thing is, I actually worked for Rocket Mortgage at one point, and you're talking about developers. I, I'm causing positive in real estate, associate broker. Our office is at 18,441 West McNichols. We've been doing this for over 47 years. We remember when there were not even that many black folks doing real estate with license. And, uh, when it comes down to certain things, I can handle you up in Lansing. I can be there for you.
So, sir, just with all due respect, before you walk away, before you walk away, we don't do campaigning at our city council. We don't do our city ca, okay, we, and, and, and I work, I'm the executive director for a federal government agency office in Lansing. I'm not, I'm not going up, like, I'm not, I'm not going up there to do any election. I'm doing my day job. I just want to make it clear. Can't do no campaigning, but thank you, sir.
How's everybody doing?
We're doing good.
It's Marcus Fitzgerald again. It's like I always come right after controversy. But, no, that's okay. I don't mind controversy. Maybe I can calm it down a little bit. But listen, uh, this, uh, this yield sign, it, it really shouldn't even be that serious to get, man. You know what I mean? I mean, and I understand what you, I'm so, I'm sorry. How's everybody doing in the city council?
You're doing good.
I am so sorry. But anyway, I understand what you're saying, Council President, but there's traffic going through there every day on a daily basis, and they, yes, they've improved Oakland 110%. Now people are going down that Service Drive, trying to hurry up and get there to that smooth drive. You know what I mean? And the only thing they have up there are illustrations of if you're going over to make a left at Oakland, you, uh, can watch out for the traffic coming off the freeway. That's what they got, and they got illustrations. No words. All those are, so while you paying attention to all the drawings, you steady driving, because you don't have a yield sign there. You know what I mean? It's a safety concern. That's all it is. And believe me, anybody would be more than happy to help Highland Park out. Anybody.
Saying coming up off of Davidson, coming up from the west.
Coming up off Davidson, heading east.
I just want to make sure.
That's the one where all of the women's house keeps getting hit. Yeah.
Right, heading east.
He's coming up, he's coming right onto Oakland.
Right, right, facing Oakland, coming right up, and Oakland's there, it's a traffic light there. So the traffic coming down the Service Drive, everybody racing to make that light. The people coming up off the freeway, racing to make that light. Please, e- every week I get somebody going to speak to somebody, somebody going to speak. They even had surveys out there. They even had surveys out there the other day.
Okay, I know your time's up.
Okay. Yeah, I'm out.
See where we are with signs.
We might have to show up with some screwdrivers and a sign.
I know where it said now.
That's all.
We might have to show up with some screwdrivers and a.
And, uh, let me know, I'll be there, I promise.
I'm just talking, because I'm, it's on the record. Whatever's on the record is on the record. Thank you so much, sir, for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, hello.
Ms. Waters.
I'm Mary Waters, um, Detroit City Council Member-at-Large. I represent the whole D. All right, uh, so I wanted to come by and introduce myself to this honorable body and to the citizens here of Highland Park. I've met a couple of you, uh, before. Um, let me just share with you some of the things that I've done since I've been on Detroit City Council. I'm the architect of the $203 million Housing Initiative. Born out of that Housing Initiative was a, um, dedicated call center, because oftentimes when people don't have housing, they kind of give up if they're being transferred around a lot. And so we have a, uh, dedicated, um, department. We call it the Kamia Davis Family Resource Center. Some of you might remember Kamia Davis, the 11-month-old baby who fell through a hole in the floor, died in water feces. And the purpose of that is to remind all of us that no child should have to die that way. Also born out of the, the, uh, $203 million Housing Initiative was $25,000, uh, down payment assistance for our first-time home buyers, additional home repairs, a senior accessibility, uh, program. I was able to, um, to establish that. Uh, I recently established a Veterans Affairs Department and a program called, yep, that's, uh, that's Young Entrepreneurs Program. And I was listening to you all regarding your housing issues with HUD and vouchers and all. Let me tell you, we have that in common. Uh, we do. So I look forward to working, uh, with each of you, uh, in the future, because we are neighbors. Uh, we can work together on our housing issues, aging, infrastructure. I look forward to that, and I'll be talking with each of you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Waters, before you go, Ms. Waters, before you go, the world is small, so last time I saw you was at Earth Day.
Earth Day, Environmental Justice?
We, we were at, uh, we were at the awards.
Right, that's right, at the Carpenting Center.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to thank you for taking the time out to come over and visit. Um, if you stay to the end, there's, there's a little bit more. So if you stay, please.
Okay.
Stay to the end. We only got about a few minutes left. We have to go through council affairs.
All right.
I think it'll be useful.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Hello, Counsel. My name is Demond Petty. I'm the founder of the Juneteenth Detroit Festival. We have updated our name to Juneteenth in Detroit. Our website is juneteenthindetroit.com. Uh, I am here to go over developments and whatever, you know, has been going on. Uh, we have a 5K scheduled for Wednesday, June 19th on Oakland Boulevard. Uh, it's not struggling at all. It's doing really well. We've got a lot of people, not a lot, but it's our first one. We've got 50 people who paid and signed up to be a part of that, so they can get their awards and their trophies and their shirts. Um, the parade is struggling. The parade is struggling because we need to be on Woodward. No one in here has the power to say so. Apparently, our mayor doesn't have the power to say so, and there is no. And there is no clear person to say so, right? There's no state troopers to call. There's no Department of Transportation to call. Somebody played Highland Park out of Woodward and now we can't use it. That's not fair. It don't make no damn sense. Like, our own mayor who runs it can't say y'all can use a mile and a half of Woodward. I don't know who she supposed to talk to, but they said that there's someone who had a position in Highland Park's local government that that position no longer exists. So that's why it was lost and whatever. It's over my head. But that's where our parade needs to be. I was a part of the Parker Pride Parade. It was beautiful, floats and everything. There was no one standing on Hamilton to watch. Hamilton is not filled with active residents that's gonna get up early in the morning and watch that. Woodward is though. Woodward got plenty of people who gonna see as soon as we stop them here and stop them there. It makes no sense that the trolley thing can come this far. The, 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 the rubber dream crews can start where they start, but right here, right here, we can't do nothing. The problem with that is people don't get to see you. They don't get to see that you love your city. They don't get to see what you did for it. They don't get to see us. Whoever in charge of that don't want us to be seen. They want us to stay ducked off and hid away. Our parade needs to be seen, like the Thanksgiving parade gets to be seen. Juneteenth parade needs to be seen. Eight years we've been doing this ducked off on different corner blocks. Coming to Highland Park, I hope that will be different because these people look like me. I stood in front of Detroit Council for eight years and all they ever did was take our permit and give us a pat on the back until they wanted to do it themselves. And they took it from us. I want us to work together as a local cohesive unit. We are changing our location for our festival. It will not be on Woodward in Manchester because there's not enough cohesion between us, the business and our local government. We hope next year we can do that. You know what I'm saying? So we just gotta work together more throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Burgess. My name is Robert Burgess and I work for the city of Highland Park. I have two jobs. One, to write all the grants that I can write. And the second one is to buy goods and services for this city as cheaply as I can buy them. And I feel like the council is not assisting in keeping a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in services that we can, that we can keep. So our water bill has increased. Now, now our garbage, our garbage collection bill is, is going to increase. We didn't let any, um, thing keep us from bringing it to the council as quickly as we could. I'm not asking you to accept anything that you haven't accepted before. Last year, you accepted extending the same contract from twenty-three to twenty-four. The only thing we are asking you is to extend the contract from twenty-four to twenty-five. And I just can't not do my job and let you know that we are leaving a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on the table.
Mr. Burgess.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Burgess, real quick, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear, or that we're clear, that that needs to be approved today.
Needs to be approved.
It mean that if we approve this, we have two thousand eighteen.
Price. That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
My name is Dorla Belleau, and I am greatly concerned. I had, I, I haven't been to a council meeting in a year and it seems to be this, it seems to be the same nonsense. I'm concerned that it seems like everything that goes on is always a certain select street or close to Woodward. When it comes below Hamilton, everything is half done. The bus stop sign is not back up. The, the, the pavement is all tore up. I tore up two long moles trying to fix it. It's all broken up, but certain streets. I don't know if it's who you know or who you talk to that certain things get done. But Edward in Puritan, the street is tore up. It, it floods up there. You smell nothing but sewer. I'm trying to do a garden. I can't do a garden without this. I, I might not be as much revenue like the rest of the place, but below Hamilton needs to get the same attention like every place else. I, I've got my garden over there. The garbage is not picked up. Certain part of the pavement on Puritan is handled. I don't know who that belongs to. I haven't looked it up. But the rest of the pavement, we're just forgotten. So our little pennies don't among, I'm not fighting. I'm, I'm trying to understand. Our little pennies don't come for anything. It's just certain people. I, I'm beginning to wonder. I came here, when I came here, I was thirteen years old. Highland Park was the place to be, beautiful place. The trees were sprayed. And I know you don't handle money, right? But what about the little pennies that we put? You charged me twenty-five dollars for water that comes on from the sky. I, I spoke to, and then I'm gonna leave. I spoke to somebody about getting water for my garden. I have to rely on rain. They told me it has to be eight thousand dollars just abruptly for me to get water on me. I said, well, can I do it in payments? You do everything for, below Hamilton, discrepancy, you know, with discrepancies. So maybe I could make payments like I've been doing. He said, oh, no, you have to pay eight thousand dollars. So I don't know what they're running. But I, I, I don't understand. It seemed like I, I'm not being, uh, 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 condescending with y'all. But I'm wondering, where is the togetherness? What is the nonsense? What is the bickering? I come back to the same bickering. It's discouraging.
We, we over the, we over the two minutes.
I wanna know why the pavement is. I don't live over there. I have, I'm gonna repeat again. I have a garden over there for the love of Highland Park, because I remember when it used to be beautiful. And I thought since I got the lot, maybe I'll do something nice, but it's very discouraging. You got some big hairy animals. I don't know what the hell they.
They're called moles. Ma'am, I don't wanna be rude, but I've been keeping everybody the two minute and one second.
Okay, well, I'm done, but I, I'm done. I'm again, I'm gonna reiterate, Dorla Yvonne Belleau. Now I'm leaving off of here. Thank you very much. Please give her my number. Please give her my number.
I know, I know, I know where she, yeah, I'll give her your number. I'll give you a card. I'll drop it with one of her nephews.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Eneel Littles. It's been a while since I've been to one of the meetings and I'm actually miss coming here. But I really would like to see more cohesion, uh, with the body up here. Um, I'm just taking a look at everything and last time I remember, one of the things I was talking about was the lots. Um, one, two, um, we have four points in which business entities or some type of business would like to, uh, purchase land lots or whatever to do something and develop an island park. Um, I'm just saying that just to, just to make sure we remember to take care of the residents also. Because the way I'm looking at it right now, if all these things, not saying that they are, if all of these were going to pass, we are in a danger of gentrifying ourselves. We have to be careful about that. Please, I don't know what, what we have to do. Make sure that residents are interested in getting lots, that those are available to them. Uh, because again, we have one, two, four businesses. And one of them says the entity, we don't know who they are face to face. And I'm telling you, we're gonna end up gentrifying ourselves. So while we can take care of our residents, if they want the lot, let them get it, take care of it. Um, but like I said, I haven't been here for a while and this is the first time I've seen these. So who knows how many other ones I've missed where other businesses was trying to get land in Highland Park. Something's happening. We're looking for an up and up and I pray that we do get better and the city does thrive um, to where what was and where we would like it to be. I just want us to just make sure we take care of each other, okay? Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Darwin Griffin, and I'll make this real brief. Uh, I belong to a group of men and we call ourselves Building Black Brick Masters. We're having a conversation, politics or politricks. And we're having the conversation on Saturday at the Breck Center in Highland Park. And it's gonna be from twelve o'clock to two thirty. And what we wanna do is we wanna have a cross-generational conversation with black men and black women. Trying to encourage people to get out and exercise their voices. We're not trying to go and preach at them. We're trying to teach. And so what we wanna do is to have people to come out and pretty much like have this conversation with us. What we wanna do is to hear what the young people in the community that may not be feeling like they have a voice and let their voices be heard. So that's the important part. We just wanna make certain that people come out, hear what the young people are saying. If they're voting, if they're not voting, we're not trying to encourage anybody to vote for anybody in particular. The main thing we're trying to do is encourage people to get out and vote. So we just wanna exercise people's voices. Thank you for letting me take this time.
Thank you, sir.
Marcel again. Um, I wanna apologize if I misdirected her leasing that, um, building. Um, I spoke with the owner, um, and we actually was speaking of the main issue again is it's no plan. Um, your CD director never even came to him with the offer to just redevelop the old plaza because the way it's designed is poorly with going on to traffic, et cetera, things like that. Um, the main thing I wanna bring up again is, um, like everybody keeps saying, you all have no real blight ordinance. You all have no codes. There's nothing making anybody do anything. Yet you sell property and you have to realize it's people in both the administration and elected to have property. So if you do that, they're gonna lose their property. So as you know, I'm on the board of directors now and one of the issues I'm having, because it's time for the truth. Um, I told Lisa, I'm no longer, um, going to support the treasurer argument because Tony works for her. So currently he's certifying documents for the school board. Um, and I thought the treasurer was supposed to hire the deputy treasurer. They're supposed to be bonded together, et cetera. But then you all said he's insured. So we're having documents coming from New York where we're having to deal things with our bank, et cetera, things like that. And I'm not comfortable with the deputy treasurer's name being on our documents. So now we have to get legal involved to make sure we're safe from a board of directors standpoint. So this is one of the issues and I do wanna bring up that we are trying to get every lot around Barber. And we've met resistance from the CD director and the mayor is supposed to speak with our president and we haven't had a follow-up. So I'm taking that direction now. I want a media, meeting for that because you all have pedophiles, drug users. We've had to put a camera behind Barber, things like that. And people on Facebook saying they're cutting our grass. Ms. White has already allocated for the grass to be cut for Barber. We're putting safety measures, but the police is not cooperating with us. They're ticketing parents. So overall, that's the school thing. I'm trying to work with you all from the school standpoint because you need education to develop. But again, I haven't seen not one development plan in this city. It's just people selling property. They sitting on it, reselling it for ten, three times, whatever they get it for. And then the people with the highest water bills is still not being held accountable. So I wanna be respectful of your time. But again, at this point, I was gonna say, as a Detroit-er, I do wanna recognize that you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't know what he's on the board for. You can ask him that question.
I'm one of the board directors of the school.
Okay. Hello, ma'am.
Hi, um, I'm Lisa. I, um, I, I, I actually wanted to mention that the light at Pittkin and, um, Hamilton is out. And when a light is out, you know, you're supposed to stop because, because you just, especially if you're coming like from this, um, from the south, you really can't see around the building if somebody's gonna turn onto Hamilton from Pittkin. And most people don't stop. I, I drive that way every day. Um, today I stopped and some guy with a big old trailer like just drove around me. And I, I'm thinking that if we don't do something about that intersection, that sooner or later we're gonna have an accident. So, um, I'm hoping that DPW can put a stop sign or something and, and, uh, smooth that out. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Um, I have a question for any member that can answer this question. Um, number one, DTE, um, has put signs on my street for all three blocks. And I did talk to the, um, chief at the chat with the chief meeting. And I asked him if a car has been there for a while, you know, do they ride around every so often? And he said that they do pick up cars. Well, this one particular SUV has been in front of my mother's house for a year. Okay? So if they're putting signs, they already put signs from Oakland to Woodward on my street. DTE was actually working on my street today. Where is the police to pick up this vehicle? Because my mother needs the assistance from DTE to finish the job to whatever they're supposed to be doing. So I'm really not understanding what is the process. Two zero six Farron Park between Oakland and Brush.
Did you let DPD know?
No.
You should. I would call it a non-emergency number. You want it?
Yes. And how long does that process take?
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll learn that together because I can't give you a definitive answer, but I do know that there's a non-emergency number for the city Highland Park. That number is three one three eight five two seven three three eight. And if you call them and then let them know what your issue is, there's an opportunity that, um, they could have somebody come out on, in a non-emergency capacity. If you call the desk, there'll be someone that might be able to direct you. They might have somebody from the Traffic Bureau come out. But that's a start without dialing nine one.
Well, they just tick, where you say.
I don't have no idea. But no, if I have an issue like that, I'll use the non-emergency number and have a conversation with the officers. They can give you some direction or tell you what the limits of their capacity is.
Okay. And the last thing that I had to say is everyone knows in Highland Park that Farron Park, the last street between Oakland and Brush is the worst block of Farron Park.
So we got to our two minutes, ma'am. I had to be very stringent with that. Two minutes and a second today.
The second block has been done and the third block has not been done.
Okay, ma'am. Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we're gonna move on. Thank you all the citizens who participated. We're gonna move on into council affairs. My brother, we done this a couple of times. So two minutes and one second. Go right ahead.
Hello, citizens. I'm not here for that. Here for some token gift, in regards to my life. I've been wrong. I went to the chief of police in the city, uh, Highland Park, complain about issues. Never got any feedback, which informed me to come to the council and try to get feedback. Never got feedback. So I'm not here to say anything about anyone, although I know everything about everyone and everything that's been played in positions where I've been wronged. Now, I tried to come and say, well, Mr. Shafi said, we don't know nothing about Hamilton Corridor LLC. And that company has sued me and put a levy against my property. Talked to Ms. Square. Don't nobody know nothing about Hamilton Corridor. I went to the city development conference meeting. This was the first meeting I had during Highland Park Community Council and trying to figure out who I go to. So I ended up at the development. Y'all can go and play for something there. I engaged with them about what's going on. But the reason why I engaged about what was going on, because I had been trying to, trying to kill. When I say this, this is not meant to be taught. This has went on rhetoric, rhetoric, rhetoric after time after time. So to the conclusion, saying, well, why people try to, is it because of the park? Is it because of the area? This is what I'm at that moment. I'm really worried. They act so, ain't nobody gonna try to kill you or shoot up your house for a time. Shoot you in your head and say he's from Highland Park. And try killing him on the city. And I'm hearing all, it's our money for my life and my pride for my life. And I'm here today. So if people wanted me to be quiet, it didn't happen. That's the crazy guy. I'm not saying, but with regards to what I'm talking about, I spoke with Ms. Robinson on the phone for an hour and fourteen minutes. And we talked about things, so as far as people. And she also said, yeah, it is a lot of wrong. She admitted to that. She said, yeah, we go, we gonna get things together. She admitted to that. But the thing about it, how's my safety?
Sir, that's your two minutes.
So what I'm going.
That's your two minutes, sir.
See, see.
That's your two minutes, sir. Everybody gets the two minutes, man. Everybody gets the same.
But see what they're still from? The chief of police. I tried to talk to him. I went down.
Yes, sir. And now we're gonna move over into council affairs.
I feel to y'all, no one called me back, so.
Thank you, sir. So ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna move into council affairs. Try to get this done briefly, starting with the councilman from the third district. The floor is yours, sir.
Um, first of all, I would like to say, um, I ask everybody to send their heartfelt prayers and love out to Councilwoman Martin. She was in a very bad accident. But thank the good Lord, she survived and she's just fine. It's, it's truly amazing that she was able to even walk away from that. I mean, far as told. So you know, uh, she's doing okay and I want y'all to know that she'll be back here very shortly. But to, to send out your love and prayers and the well, well wishes that she give out to.
Uh, having said that, uh, I would like to make a motion.
No, you may not, sir. No, you may not, sir.
If anybody wants to see my house, it's 59. Go by and look at it.
Okay. I would like to make a motion. And before I make this motion, I simply want to say that we have emphasized the numerifications about bringing things to us at the last minute. You can honestly expect us to give you a sound decision in five minutes of you. You asked me to do a job. You put me here to do that job, and then you want to beat me up when I do it correct. And I find that interesting. Everybody's upset about the garbage. And I understand that, but this is something that the last minute, it's not a short contract. It's a lengthy contract. And we haven't had time to review it, or speak on it, or study it, or vet it in any shape, form, or fashion. But everybody's so upset about it. So I'm going to make this motion. Because I believe in giving the people what you want. You want the garbage contract, you got it. I make a motion to approve the garbage contract with G F A.
And all I need is a second for one of my councilmen.
So thanks. So hold on a second before we go in. We have to have, so this is what happens when you vote to not have a parliamentarian. You have to make a motion to suspend the rules.
To allow this matter to be brought back on the table.
Come back on.
The matter died.
No, it didn't. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So you're asking us, hold on a second, hold on a second, legal. Are you telling us that we need to suspend the rules to bring the matter back?
Yes, you would have a vote to suspend the rules. And then if the rule suspension is approved, then there would be a vote on the matter.
Remember that these are the two people who voted not to have a parliamentarian. Okay, these are the people who voted not to have a parliamentarian.
Necessary. Can we get to what we doing here? Can y'all go five minutes without trying to cut each other's throat?
Oh, please. You've got to be kidding me. Okay, go ahead. Get it over with. Chill out, Corey.
Motion to suspend the rules.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to bring this item back.
The garbage hauling contract.
To bring back the contract, to bring back the contract with G F L.
The resolution to amend the contract with G F L.
To bring back the contract with G F L.
Is there support?
Have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi, supported by Councilwoman Manica, to suspend the rules temporarily to bring this item back up for vote. That is the resolution to amend the contract with G F L Environmental USA for waste disposal services. Madam clerk, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules to bring this item back? We have to.
Yeah, you need to have a roll call on the suspension of the rules. It has to pass by a super majority.
So we're going to do two things.
Yes, two things. One, suspend the rules. And if that passes, then someone would make a motion to vote on the resolution.
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes, to temporarily suspend.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes. Floor is open, Mr. Ashafi. You're still in council affairs.
I make a motion to approve the G F L contract for the garbage disposal and pickup.
Have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution to amend the contract with G F L Environmental Services for waste disposal services made by Councilman Ashafi. Support is offered by whom? Ms. Robinson is offering support. Questions? Concerns? Dissent? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
So moving on. Hold on a second. I still have the floor, Council President.
You still, and you got about a minute of it.
Yeah. Um, I'm, I would not advise I didn't make it. So I'm just, I'm simply saying, you guys are really starting to stress me out. It's a lot of stress. It's bad enough for douchebag up here, but to have y'all, I know it is, do the same, it really gets on my nerves. Okay, you asked me to do a job. I'm doing that job. And I'm doing that job correctly, and I'm doing that job fairly. We follow the rules here. I can't afford to break the rules. If I break the rules, they'll be all over me about that. I won't be sitting here long. But they bend the rules and break the rules how they see fit, and you applaud and you cheer and you smile and you laugh. It's funny. It's funny until your ass is out on the street. Let's see how funny it is then. This is not a laughing matter. Your very survival, your very state is at hands here with the decisions we make here on a daily basis. And if we don't make the right ones, just like that gentleman said, we will gentrify our own selves right out of this community. While everybody's sitting here giggling and laughing and joking, this ain't no damn game. This is my life, your life, our livelihoods. What the hell is funny? Tell me what's funny. Show me something that's funny. You asked me to be professional. I'm asking you and the audience to be professional. This is not a laughing matter. The more you encourage these douchebags, the worse it is fun to get. Enough is enough. We've been given a bonnet opportunity here, a great gift. The water debt is gone. Soon the cases will be dismissed. We have nowhere to go but forward, H P. So why aren't we moving forward? Why are we still playing the same pennyheady ass games that we've been playing the last 20 years in this city? When do you have enough? When is enough is enough for you? Since everything's so damn funny. I'm laughing right now. It's not funny. This is our future, our city, our life. And anybody that doesn't take a sense, you need to pack up and leave because they're trying to get us out of here. You think I'm lying? You think I'm joking? You think the chara forest here on a coincidence? 24 hours in H P? Nothing but feel good all goddamn day long? That's a means to regentrify and kick your butts up out of here.
And Mr. Ashafi, you are reaching your time.
They're not here for any, they're not here just for the hell of it. Understand that. They got a purpose and a plan. And I promise you, you're not a part of it.
Okay, before you get us in another lawsuit, we're going to move on to Councilwoman Manica.
Giggling and joking, this is not funny.
Thank you very much. Ms. Councilwoman Manica for council affairs. Thank you very much. Ms. Manica, if you would.
First, I wanted to just say thank you and going again for coming. Also, we are, it may not seem like it sometimes, but I think we are moving. It may be at a sales pace, but we are moving. What I will ask is that be mindful and be thoughtful to us a little bit. We do need to get to our ordinance. We absolutely do, and I say that consistently, consistently. And so we are, we had a workshop today, which brought forth some things. Look forward to another one. Look forward to more conversations. And we are, we'll be trying to get someone to take care of, I think, a wheel sign. I would definitely look into it. I really did not think where it was. I thought it was somewhere else. Not saying that I can get it done, but then I'm going to look into it. I really don't know, but I think we have some good things going on this weekend in different places such as the police department. I'm going to mention it again. Zeta Beta Sorority Incorporated, Capital Rosetta Chapter, the Highland Park Chapter, Amika at Highland Park, and myself present the health equity for our community. There are some flyers out there. It is this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:30. And on Hamilton at 13233 Hamilton, there'll be information on communication, healthy living, immunizations, health resources, home safety. Also, lead department, so Wayne County stepped in, vehicles, and your child can be tested for lead. Also, they can get immunizations there if you do the Q R code in advance so that they, we can give you a call, find out your children's name. We don't keep the information. We give it to Wayne County. So in case you don't know, whenever you get a kid a shot or whenever you get a shot, it goes directly, that information to Wayne County. So they would be able to actually tell us, hey, or say to you when you come, your child already, they've already looked it up. They don't have these shots. We have them ready for them. There will be opportunity to give baby a shingles. That's it. And that's only limited. That's for adults. The lead testing is only for children. That's an opportunity for you to find out if your kid has AIDS. Now, that lead doesn't necessarily mean it comes from your house. It could come from school. It becomes a pencil. Kids put pencils in their mouth, different things like that. It gives you an opportunity to say, I need to go have this done. I need to go find out, get further testing, whether it be in my water or whether it be in my child. What's happened? There will be resources there for people who need help, sorry, who need head start, an early head start. We're talking about ages six months, four months, because we have to go to work. Am I right? Most of us have to go to work, or we need those resources. Again, there will be a lot of other resources on things you can do with your home, to weather that, to revenue, the organization. But you know what I'm saying? Just several other resources to help you. So please come check it out. Fire department will be there to give away a few things. Police department will be giving away a few things. Till they run out, say that. Now, when they run out, I don't have, I don't have that, that information. But I think it would be fun, as well as a community baby shower. So if you know anyone, excuse me, that is expecting a baby, that would be a great opportunity for them too, but they need to register. Okay, you can find that information on my page as well. I think there's some things downstairs. That's the biggest thing that I have this week. I do know there's some voting things going on as well at, Boston High School. With New Grace and New Grace Church. That's on four. And then also at Parker.
That is, I can't think of the name of it. It's in my mind. I can see it.
Thank you. Park Place. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Park Place. Again, keep us abreast of those things that's out there and needed. And if we stop for a minute, because again, I think there's some things we need to do when it comes to, if you keep coming to us as well. I used to say the same things to Mr. Hinton. We need to take care of some of our rules, some of our ordinance, and some of our papers or our forms, so that we won't have as many issues as we do when people come and we will know and provide more information ourselves when people come to get a development or property in our, in our, in our city. And that's all for me. That's not tonight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Proton?
Hello, Highland Park. I just want to state for the record again, last year, two, three times via email, via text. This year, via email, via text. I've asked several times for all the contractors that we have and when their contracts are up. I've asked for all of this stuff in advance, so we don't have to get hit with the things that we got hit with today. And I still, to this day, right now, I haven't gotten any information. And I refuse to vote yes on something if I don't have informed information to, so that I can make an informed decision. I will not do that. That's why I vote no, because I invite you all the time. I get my packet every Wednesday, every Thursday, before the council meeting. Make it so I can show you what they give us to vote, to vote with. I have to research everything myself. And that's the truth. I love y'all. And that's it. Before you go, once again, that's the sign. I'm just making myself clear in case anybody thought I meant Mr. Hinton works here. I was not saying that he worked out. Saying the same thing goes for Mr. Playboi, Fireboy. When, it's the same for Mr. Hinton. When I said, when I said to Mr. Hinton, it goes the same for Carl. That's what I was saying. I wasn't saying he was your hit.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This is not going to be nice. Ms. Waters, a year ago in February, I came to city council after becoming city council president. I sat in front of the body and I explained to them that our city was in jeopardy, that there were people actively working to dismantle the structure of the city. At that time, we had had a meeting where, as a council president for five minutes, I made one motion, and that was to have the support of the National Parliamentarians Association come in and to help guide our city council. There are two of us here to have college degrees. Our other peers do not. There are two of us here that are members of, are black, excuse me, excuse me. There are two of us here that are members of Black Greek Fraternities and Sororities. We learned the parliamentary process as young people, and we've worked with parliamentary process for years. And the first decision as city council president was to make sure that everyone on city council had access to parliamentary support, so that we didn't have the type of meetings that we had now. And for a year, we have had these chaotic meetings. And what you see tonight is a little bit of performance art. You see people coming in here. I've had the type of profanity that you would think at a bus stop has been had in this room by the people that are sitting in front of you, to your right, to my left. When people say that they follow the rules, that is a complete misrepresentation of the actual facts. In fact, that is such a misrepresentation that I've had to act as city council president and encourage the state police and the attorney general to come and look at our city council. And February of this year, I sent the following letter to our legal department and asked the state to come in. And that letter is as follows. As city council president, I'm requesting that the law department begin an investigation into potential charter violations by a member of city council. In Highland Park, city charter, section 7.5, the roles and duties of the Department of Law are described and included in a provision under section 7 dash 5 A4, the Department of Law shall prosecute charter ordinance violations. I alleged then, and I'm reading this now for the public, this is made in February, I alleged Chrisheal Ashafi, currently sitting in the seat for the third district, illegally assumed the role of city council as he was in default to the city of Highland Park at the time of declaring his candidacy and at the swearing in ceremony on January 2nd. He is ineligible to run for office or to hold office. I alleged that Mr. Ashafi was fully aware of this default status with the city of Highland Park and took the oath of office in a blatant disregard to the statute of the law. Each candidate for the city of Highland Park election must complete the affidavit to run for the, for the office stated in information that is submitted as a candidate for the office is correct under penalty of law. That letter went in for an investigation, and the information has been provided back to us to show that it is in fact factual. So for this man to come in here and cuss and spit and be disrespectful every time he's in this room, and to say he follows the rules, to say he follows the rules is a very, is a very clear misrepresentation. So the challenges that we face, this conundrum that we are facing right now, which you see today, has been in place for the last year. And the wheels of this machine are turning. We received the results from our investigation, and there are additional steps that are going to take place. I just want the people in the room to know, because people ask me, Mr. Thomas, what are you doing about this lawlessness? Tonight, what happened with the budget? What happened with contracts? This is a regular occurrence in our meetings. So if we had representation at a higher level, we want you to be aware of the dilemma that we face. And I believe, this is my suspicion, that we are under the influence of a racketeer influenced corrupt organization. Because ma'am, I filled out my affidavit to be a candidate two hours before the window closed on the last day. I've lived here for 20 years, and everybody in my quad knows me, but there's absolutely no way that I would have beat the incumbent, Mr. Rodney Patrick, who is a staple in this community. But somehow, because I was able to stay on the ballot, filling out the affidavit correctly, I'm city council president. I took statistics in college. It is absolutely impossible for that to happen without the influence of a racketeer influenced corrupt organization that has helped these members sitting in front of me, to my left, be elected. Someone came into this room and made that statement during an actual meeting. It is on the record. It is also admissible evidence in court. So when it finally comes out, it's there. So the citizens have asked week after week, and what you're seeing today is an eruption of frustration because the average citizen in the room doesn't know what's going on. And last week in my absence, buffoonery took place that would not ever be allowed in the city of Detroit at a city council meeting. That, in part, is why these meetings are so frustrating. And I want to make sure that when you come here and you go have a, have a conversation with Mr. Tate, have a conversation with Mr. DeRou, have a conversation with Councilman Benson, and ask them to take a look at some of our meetings. And you, if, this will verify the situation that we have. Ask Council President Sheffield to take a look at our meetings, because we are at the heart of the city of Detroit. This city cannot function if there's a cancer boiling in the middle of the city. That is one of the most important points that I wanted to raise. Now, for the people in the community who are talking about developing. this is the, the Strategic Fund Neighborhood Map for the city of Detroit. If you look at this map, do you notice anything significant about where the new strategic fund areas are located? They completely surround Highland Park. I'll show you another map from twenty sixteen. This map in twenty sixteen shows the targeted study area for multifamily housing in the city of Detroit. Those two maps can be an overlay. I'll show you one more image. This is an image from Mayor Duggan's speech talking about the increase in the assessed property value in the city of Detroit. That shaded out areas of the city of Highland Park. That light blue represents the highest increase in assessed property value in the city is in the core, in the north end, in Bangltown, in Highland Park. We need to reevaluate the way that we look at the word gentrification, because eighty percent of our population left between nineteen thirty and now. The people who left were at the higher economic strata. So what we're looking to do is repatriate our citizens. We don't want to alienate anyone. It is not normal that we have a community that is ninety percent low income. That's not normal. Detroit is not like that. There's a strata. We have a lot of poor people. We also have well-to-do people, and that's how a community functions. There is a balance between those two. And as Highland Parkers, we need to understand that we need to be considering repatriation, getting people who used to live here to come back and live here to alleviate our fears about gentrification, because we want people that look like us and have a higher income level to add to our community. We want people who don't look like us to come and move to our community and add to the value of our community. This was never a majority black city until it became poor. And I will say this to the cows come home. This is the United States of America. To be going anyplace else on earth, you would be at a disadvantage. We need to stop talking about color and start talking about culture. We need to start talking about our collective culture, because the people in Highland Park are those people who have fought to preserve the culture of this community. They are black. They are white. They are Asian. They are Latino. They represent the entire rainbow. And if we continue to talk about keeping people out, we could be blocking our next best neighbor. So let's have this conversation about development. Let's understand what we have that is of value. And let's make this a cosmopolitan city again. Highland Park was like the United Nations in the nineteen forties. Every racial group, every religious group, every particular demographic was here in the city. Let's get those people back here. Let's make sure that we have the right language to make people feel welcome and not discourage anybody from rejoining our city and rejoining our prosperity. Having finished all business related to the city of Highland Park, the chairman will declare the meeting adjourned. Good night. I'll do my best.
Did you research Judge Preston Thomas yet?
No, I'm gonna.
My question for the day. I'm on, thank you.
All right, thank you.